Okay. It's six oh one on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Here in the Veterans Room at the Town Hall in Southbridge, Mass. This is a meeting of the Joint Planning and Development Subcommittee and Town Council. First order business is called to order. Second order business is roll call. Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Rivas? Absent. DeeDee?
Here.
Kathy Bernadone is absent. And I'm here. We have a call. Okay. Item number three, consider and accept the minutes of A, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Three oh. Okay. Um, three B. Consider the minutes of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second it.
Any discussion? If you're being run, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Three oh. Item number three C, consider the minutes of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? And all present? Very good. Item number four, discuss review whether to recommend Town Council extend the contract with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for Town Planner Services through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork, entertain a motion to Town Council for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Uh, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Um, as you're aware, we've still have the Town Planner position vacant. We have gotten no additional applicants at this time. We had a conversation with Ken Comia, who's serving in the role as the interim, um, to see if he would be willing to stay on in the current role that he is in. The only caveat they asked was that we circle back with Central Mass Pioneer, from Central Mass Planning Commission to see if they had capability to provide us one. They do not, so Pioneer Valley said that they would continue the services with Ken through the remainder of the fiscal year. We have money allocated within the salary line item, so we'll be able to cover the expense through that year. I want to add that Ken has been very valuable to the town, his knowledge of the town, prior knowledge of the town and the issues that we've had in the past, moving forward, have been invaluable, so we're very fortunate that we're able to secure the services through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Have you spelled Ken's last name?
C-O-M-I-A, Comia.
Thank you. Uh, committee, any discussion? Audience? Any discussion? Counselor McCady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So, how much are we paying for this service? There was nothing, no paperwork coming up?
Uh, it's equivalent to what we asked for back in September. It's a, um, he's getting paid per month, basically no more than thirty-two hundred dollars, and, uh, he's on-site for, uh, at least one day a week, and he's working additional hours remotely. He seems to be doing more than what we've hired him for when it comes to hours. He's been accessible when he's not here throughout the week. And that was, uh, the rate was, uh, we've had to land on an hourly, uh, a number of hours to keep him down below the existing salary line, to ensure that we don't go over budget.
So we're paying thirty-two hundred a month.
I'll get the additional information for Monday night.
And I apologize that we didn't have the contract in advance. Uh, I'm trying to ensure that we don't lapse and have any lapse in service. He expires December thirty, so bringing this to December four would ensure that, um, we wouldn't have to push this through as a last-minute agenda item. Lord forbid we didn't have another, um, subcommittee meeting. Uh, he unfortunately is still has it getting signed on his side. I'd suggest that if only he even gives us a blank one, that that would be, uh, better than none. So he'll get us something before the Town Council meeting.
And Pioneer Valley, that's in the western part of the state?
That is correct.
And Central Mass, we pay dues in Central Mass.
We do, correct, but they do not have the capacity to provide us staff. They don't have enough staff to give us somebody that we require, so that's why they allowed us to go to Pioneer Valley to seek the services through that planning commission.
Alright, thank you.
On-site, Counselor?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Let the record show that Kathy Bernadone arrived at six oh seven. Um, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Present. Okay. Very good. Three oh one. Very good. Item number five, discuss review whether to recommend Town Council accept the Making It Public twenty-twenty-four Award for fifteen thousand dollars, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork, entertain a motion to Town Council for approval. And says it twice. Okay, DeeDee, got motion?
Second.
And a second by Dave Adams. Uh, Mr. Manager?
I will defer to Peg on this grant.
Peg?
This was brought forward, uh, previously, permission to apply. The Town Council approved, we went forward, we were awarded, we now are accepting the grant. Uh, it's twelve thousand dollars for a ca- a call for an artist to do a piece of public art in town. I, I ask that the town allow the redevelopment authority to oversee the, you know, choosing the project and, and doing the call for an artist to mimic what they have already done through the urban agenda with the, uh, the mural at Central Street. And the other, uh, three thousand dollars goes towards, um, you know, towards the... to complement the project. Twenty percent to... Issue for me to finish calling, counter-signing the agreement. So we would initially get three thousand dollars, um, and then we get the other two tranches, tranches, after we participate in this, they're, they'll provide a training about how to do a call for artists, which would be very valuable. The town didn't know how to do a call for artists, so this would help teach us.
Uh, Counselor Adams?
Just a quick question on, on the... They do this again. I, not that I, I like the art that was over there, right? Where's this going again, I'm sorry?
It's up to them where they choose to put the art, yeah.
Okay, so, I, I would only make one suggestion here is that, though I like the, the artwork that was on the building, it's beautiful, all that kind of stuff, and I know it represents the, the valley, but I'd like to see something Southbridge in it. And I think that'd be a stipulation of it, of the contract.
Something Southbridge. Uh, maybe, uh, you could...
Yeah, I can provide anything, but I think it'd be left up to the artist and the redevelopment authority. That would be, it would portray Southbridge itself, or the history of Southbridge.
So, so, may I respond to that, Chair?
Sure.
So, uh, the, the redevelopment authority's goal in the last mural was also to represent Southbridge, and that was the artist's interpretation. It was brilliant, it was supposed to be vibrant, it was supposed to represent sort of the, the breadth of our community as diverse and, um, and although his theme is birds, you know, so he, he, that was his interpretation, so I will ensure, I will ask them to please ensure that, yes, Southbridge be the, that interpreted, uh, interpreted for the artist, or, or Southbridge be a part of it. Um, but know that, you know, that sometimes can be a very abstract interpretation.
Yeah, but I would, I would, I would, but, like, may I continue, Mr. Chairman? I understand the artist's point of view, may it be, and I understand, and I'd say it again, it's beautiful up there, and it represented that area, maybe this area. But the perception of it is, it did not represent town of Southbridge in that sort of way, and when you look at it, you look at all the other murals, and except for the Coca-Cola one over on the other building, uh, all those had something to do with the history of Southbridge, or the people that were there, or the buildings that are there, something like that, so, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Anyone else with the committee? DeeDee?
Just a quick question. I went over everything. Say the gentleman is painting, the lady's painting, whatever she's doing, she falls off the scalpel and I don't see where it's anybody's liability. Whose liability would that be, and how is that covered?
Whenever we enter into contracts, we always have the, whomever we're contracting with, we have them insure themselves.
So you'll have a copy of their insurance before they?
Yes.
Get up and, okay.
Yeah.
That's just my question. Thank you.
Anyone else on the committee? Uh, Counselor Lazo first, go ahead.
I think the mural on the building, wonderful, but I too agree with the previous speaker that I think everybody was looking for this mural to be some sort of historical landmark, sort of people, historical times. It's almost like a throwback mural is what everybody was looking for. And then when it was painted, everybody was, thought it was beautiful. And what the thing was, I don't think that's what the expectations were by the book. Uh, so going forward, I think maybe, you know, if we need a little more input into it, um, and have Southbridge decide what the mural looks like, I think that would be better.
Thank you. Um, your first thought?
I would love to.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, sure, so, um, the, what we learned through the, um, the process of looking for muralists was that the shelf life of a typical mural is probably between five to ten years, and it's, you're looking for things that don't become dated. It, the, the opinion was that drawing people can sometime be, sometimes be, you know, become dated easily, and so that's why they were moving towards not people. Uh, I can, but I appreciate everyone's, uh, opinion. Um, so, uh, you know, uh, the wanting to honor our history and the people of the town is always something that, you know, is, is worthwhile. But in, in the murals, it seems to be that maybe that's not necessarily the place to do it. For the, for this project, this may not be a mural, this may be, they may choose to do a different kind of public art. There's lots of different forms of public art, um, so what I would just recommend is that, um, you know, if you can look out for the redevelopment authority meetings and attend them and give your feedback there, maybe that would be a good way to help them, and I will be sure to relate to them, you know, the comments here.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Shania, then.
Everybody, when it comes time to finalize the particular art that somebody has, comes to a contract, am I correct? The artist is gonna have a contract with the community. That contract comes to council. So the design of that interpretation, it will be in that contract. And it's just that, for me, from what I've heard out there, people are expecting a little bit of our history. And not so much even the people of the community, but the diversity of our community. So yes, people, you know, it, it doesn't have to be somebody that was famous in Southbridge being up there, but the diversity of our community, I think that's what people are looking at, and people come up the street, they, sometimes they still don't know what that painting is. Beautiful, but they don't know what that painting is. So I think part of the consideration should be a little bit of our history in, in a mural. And it's just, you know, I, I didn't expect myself, I expected something that said what Southbridge is about. I don't think that particular mural tells us what Southbridge is about, but I mean, you could, and take into consideration what the redevelopment authority and I think everybody in the whole, get the idea, this is what we're looking for, this is hopefully what you can do. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Staves, then Counselor Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just a quick comment, and I would love to see if it's, and maybe we can favor Southbridge artists specifically by doing this. Because I would, because we have a bunch of artists in our community that obviously know the community, and it would be, I think it would be an ideal thing to have Southbridge murals be done by Southbridge people. And that the one that we have there is nice. Um, and I've also seen, oh, there's a whole slew of them on the walls in Worcester, and I would love to see our town look like that over time. Obviously, it took a while to get there. And I think a lot of them were done by local people in Worcester, obviously, which I'm much regarded as, but we have, so it's happened.
Uh, Counselor Lazo, then, John, and then...
You went around all the towns and seen what they, what they do. I, Peg, I think that, that mural was fantastic, that's on the building down there. I, I came around the corner, I thought it was beautiful. The only idea I'm giving you is feedback from the public. You know, they came to me, they say, oh, Counselor, well, you know, what about this, what about that? And I think, I think you saying, come to a meeting, I'm not gonna go to the meeting, I'm entrusting the redevelopment authority to do the right thing. You go to Webster, they painted a Coca-Cola label on the building. They went with the Americana look of look, the old Coca-Cola antique sign was painted up on the building. People in Webster liked it, whatever, whatever floats their boat. For me, if I get some feedback, I would rather just lay it at your feet, in, in other words, here's the feedback. I'm just, accept whatever's built. I think what came out of that was beautiful, uh, but I think what the people were looking for was a little bit different. But just giving you the feedback and you go where, where it takes you.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, my words.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Palowski?
I don't know much about this, I haven't read the paper, I haven't had your agenda, but, uh, in other communities that I've been in for short times, I'm sure this is already fast-tracked, I even know if it's specifically a mural. There's a place called Churo, Nova Scotia. And whenever they cut down a tree, they have local people, and I know we have local artists that can do this. They carve wooden carvings, they're like sculptors that use chainsaws, but have various people at that town, like in this town, we might have Jerry, we might have some of our esteemed members of former and maybe current councilors, and they're all over this, and they don't cut down trees to have these. And they last ten, fifteen years. They have some famous historic people. Canada, they treat the Native Americans, Native Canadians, by the way, they call them First Nations. Always careful to, uh, include them in local historical efforts, and I just, maybe not this time, but maybe someone on the committee next time, we might hunt down someone that can do that locally, maybe a William Marcy, or, uh, a lot of people know that Pinton Field, that Floyd Cross is named after the first Catholic, uh, person, priest that came to town and gave pastors once a month. You know, we could maybe have some of these people honor them, have a little guide, like I know some of the committee meetings I attended, where some of them come in from Old Sturbridge Village, and they're doing Sturbridge, I wonder what I can do in Southbridge. And I would love someday, I, it'll probably be after I die, but someday we ought to have a statue of John F. Kennedy over there where the Italian-American monument is currently, where he once stood. Uh, this has been all over the country, I used to see it on Chris Matthews, maybe if someone, I should probably do that for that committee though, maybe next year. Statues are expensive, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor McCady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Clearly, Southbridge is known for eyewear, the optical museum, the Eye of the Colored, so I would ask that it be geared towards something like that. And also, I would ask that about visibility too, I wouldn't want this tucked back in the corner of some park somewhere. The only people who are gonna see it are maybe people who are on skateboards or something like that. So I would like to see something that's visible to tourists that come into this town. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I think we've just about discussed it. Anything more to be contributed, committee? Very good. There being no, no further discussion, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present? Let the record show that Counselor Rivas arrived at six fifteen. Item number six. Uh, discuss review whether to recommend Town Council accept the Community Planning Grant for seventy-five thousand dollars for an Urban Renewal Plan, major amendment, and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. That's a main motion to Town Council for approval.
Second.
DeeDee and Kathy. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Uh, through you. I believe we used to have a spoken about this Urban Renewal Plan.
Together, you and I?
No, as the, as a committee, or I've heard it.
Absolutely.
And this is the award of the grant, so we will move forward with the process of this Urban Renewal Plan. Important for the town, uh, as we discuss a lot of, uh, different factors in town.
Okay, committee, any questions? Counselor Adams?
Thank you. This is something we need to update, and you've been talking about it quite some time, and, uh, thanks for getting this passed, and all, or at least approved the state, and for us to hopefully pass this. Thank you. Much needed. And I know it's not gonna be a doorstop.
Any other committee members? Audience? Counselor McCady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Uh, just have a couple of questions. What, does the redevelopment authority have some plan in mind to use these funds? That's my, that would be my first question.
Please.
So, if you'll recall, the Urban Agenda Grant fiscal year twenty-one, we brought in BSC Group as the consultant, that was sort of our first, my first experience with BSC Group. They were recommended by the state to, um, to consult with us on how to recover from COVID economically. Uh, and, and, and how to, through the, through, through two different grants, the Local Rapid Recovery Planning, uh, grant and this, um, Urban Agenda Grant. Uh, we went for both. The state said hire BSC Group, and they can manage both, they can be your consultant for both grants because they wrote your, um, your Urban Renewal Plan, and the redevelopment authority was educated, three different trainings, we came through the Town Council with those trainings, uh, to kind of help them learn what their powers are, how they can exercise the, the Urban Renewal Plan for the benefit of the town. Uh, the, you know, to date, things that weren't done, that were in the Urban Renewal Plan, were things like there was a parking garage recommended for Central Street parking lot that didn't go forward. Um, and so, um, there was a fire station slated for sixty-seven, uh, Central, or not necessarily a fire station, but the whole block was to be acquired and, um, redeveloped. And so we've obviously seen many changes since then that, that didn't follow that Urban Renewal Plan, right? But, so Central Pizza has done, you know, over a million dollars of renovations, they're staying. The, you know, sixty-seven Central has come, come and gone as a potential fire station, and now this, you know, it's, it's staying, so um, we, we want to reevaluate what was initially in the Urban Renewal Plan, and then add in where, uh, we think it's needed. For instance, the fire station should now be added to the Urban Renewal Plan so that the town can strategically ensure whoever goes into that building is someone that, that we want to see, rather than just having to do, um, an RFP or, you know, some kind of open, um, auction like that. So, uh, the, yes, they have a plan, it's already sort of mapped out, that, that, um, Urban Agenda fiscal year twenty-one mapped out that this would be the next step, is to do the, the major amendment to ensure that some key parcels are included, uh, and hopefully we'll get going on that as quick as possible, so it all lines up with the fire station relocating.
So the, the paperwork that came with this from the state said that they approved of the project, but the project is not specific at this time? Could be several different projects, is that, is that fair to say?
The project is based on, when I came to you last year for the One Stop for Growth application, it had the Mass Works grant for two million dollars, this community grant, uh, planning grant for the Urban Renewal Plan Major Amendment. The, you know, so there were X, Y, and Z applications that we had submitted all at once. This is, this is the Urban Agenda Grant application, or the, excuse me, the Urban Renewal Plan, a major amendment application.
Alright. I'm not very hearing a specific project.
Uh, the, the... Forgive me for not being clear. The project is to update the town's Urban Renewal Plan to, with a, with a major amendment, and you do so by hiring a contractor or a consultant to come in for seventy-five thousand dollars and, and update that, that plan with, with the redevelopment authority. Is that clear?
Yep.
Okay.
And this was part of the One Stop for Growth Urban Agenda Grant? This was part of it? One of them was Mass Works, and there's the Community Planning.
This is the Community Plan.
Right, this is Community Planning, but part of the Urban Agenda Grant was also Mass Works. I went back to look at some of the previous Town Council meetings, and the Mass Works grant was also named under the Urban Agenda Grant, One Stop for Growth Urban Agenda Grant.
I, I think there's, there might just be some wires crossed. It's probably very confusing for everyone else. Uh, there are ten grant applications that we can apply for. Um, we, uh, in June, under the One Stop for, Community One Stop for Growth, previously, um, an Urban Agenda Grant, we sought an Urban Agenda Grant related to the, the redevelopment authority and the Urban Renewal Plan. This time, we sought a Community Planning Grant related to the redevelopment authority and the Urban Renewal Plan. Um, it's, I'm, I'm just trying to fit us, our projects into buckets that, you know, in which we're eligible. Um, but, but the Urban Agenda is one of the, the grants you can apply for. We didn't get it this year.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? There being no further discussion, although, I'm sorry, Counselor Adams?
The park that was just north of Central Street in Hamilton, are you still looking at putting that there, or is that something that's been mixed? It was right on the river, it was a riverfront walk, right in that area.
That is, so, that is still in the Urban Renewal Plan. However, it's hard to justify another park when we have so much maintenance in our existing parts that's, that's needed. Uh, that would be something that will also be looked at during the Open Space and Recreation Plan update, to be done in the next year.
Now, area was supposed to be purchased too, as well, and it'd have to be taken over. Right, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Very good. Item number seven. Discuss review whether to approve submitting an expression of interest for a municipal vulnerability preparedness and MVP action grant due December fifteenth, two, one, repair of the failing portion of River Street being designed by BSC Group. Two, address the levee dam system downtown and establish flood control, control procedures. And three, evaluate flood protection opportunities for the wastewater treatment facility, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork, entertain a motion to Town Council for approval.
Some move.
Second.
Through you. I will defer to Peg on this, she's done a lot of work on this vulnerability plan, and worked with a lot of the department heads to develop some key strategic locations through lots of discussions, so I'll refer to her.
Thank you. Peg?
Yep, uh, so this is similar to with the One Stop for Growth, where you can put in an expression of interest initially and get feedback from the state to find out whether you have viable applications. Um, they, they too, through this, um, MVP program, have the expression of interest. I, I wouldn't want us to lose the opportunity to go for funding to supplement existing projects, so I felt like the failing portion of River Street was a no-brainer. Um, if, if we can, uh, win that award, that would help us to pursue the additional work from, um, uh, Dexter Russell to Pleasant Street, or at least a portion of that project could be funded if we were to go forward with it. Um, the, addressing the levee dam system, right now, the fire station, uh, the, the fire chief and the planning board have been, been in a lot of conversation about um, the AO, the, the newest housing development application through the planning board at the AO, and whether there are any dam levee issues to be, uh, to be concerned with. This would be a way to sort of look at it from a more systematic, take a systematic approach to, is there any dam issue? Are there any things we could be doing? And if so, you know, can they be funded through the MVP, um, action grants? The, evaluating the flood protection opportunities, speaking with the DPW, um, could we be reducing our, could, so, so there's some maintenance that could be done on some of the pipes that could help reduce potential future flooding, and it would serve us on a day-to-day basis, not just on a, when we get flooded. So it kind of serves us in, in, you know, many ways. I'm not sure of these projects, which ones they'll say are, are a go, but if we could cast the net there, um, and, and see what they come back with. Again, each of these were plucked from the Municipal Vulnerability Planning Report. So they've already been established by the town as priorities based on that planning exercise.
Committee? Counselor Rivas?
Um, I just want to say I'm pleased to see this, after all, I remember all of the work that, um, the group of stakeholders did, you know, for those many months that we worked on it. Um, and, you know, talking about the flood potential and, you know, all of the vulnera- vulnerabilities in our town, um, and to see this come forward, and hopefully we do get, um, some funding for this work, so thank you for doing that.
Anyone else? Audience? Audience? Uh, Mr. Steves.
I'm just following that, I remember being part of that group too. And I remember, I think, that one of the top priority we had was specifically dealing with the culverts that were running under the road, under the road, in, in that particular area of town, which I would think would be kind of tied into, sort of tied into number two and, and number three. I don't specifically remember talking anything about the levee and dam system on, in that, the AO complex, although that was just tied into it. And so I, I am kind of concerned about making sure that we protect the community as a whole and not do a project that just protects, that it equals a developer to do a project.
There's, oh, go ahead, Peg.
Yeah, I think to the contrary, actually. This isn't to serve the, the developer, this is certainly to serve the town. And the, there, there was a FEMA inspection, I've learned about five years ago, that showed that there was some potential that the developer might want to do, but the town, what is the town's position to protect itself is what this goal would be, not specific to, to the developer. And so, it's, again, it's a systematic way of, of starting to evaluate it.
So are there more levees than that just goes down by AO?
I, I am not the expert on levees, I apologize.
No.
Are there more dams, do you know?
There are multiple dams.
There are multiple dams.
Council McHedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this is for climate change preparedness, that's what I'm looking at here. That's their core principle. They want to give us $3 million, but we have to come up with a 20% match, which is $600,000. That's a lot of funds for us to try and come up with in order to match this. I think $600,000 could go a lot towards fixing roads and, other people's roads. But, I mean, if you were going to look at a dam, that means looking at it and say, the one in Westville is the one I think we should take a look at, because that's the one that, and it's federal, but we could match it, match whatever they want to put into it, so. It's something that I would think that we'd want to take a look at. Thank you.
May I comment?
Christine?
Yeah, so, uh, part of the strategy with going for the failing portion of River Street is to repair our roads, and if we are spending on the additional road portion, we would meet that 20% with the, the funds going towards the rest of the road. And with regards to the Army Corps of Engineers dam, I don't know that we would have any jurisdiction to be able to, uh, help.
You don't know?
I don't know.
All right. Uh, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, just through you, the important thing, and I just want to reiterate what Christine just said, that if we are successful in having them capture River Street, that is one of our critical streets that we know is failing, we would meet the match through what we've already spent there, so to, that's how you get your $3 million. That's how we got the $2 million for River Street, to go after these grants, or do nothing, and then say, how do we come up with $2 million to fix that part of the road? So this is an opportunity for us to see if it is a viable project, so that we can capture money to fix a failing road. Thank you.
Uh, Council Shania.
Uh, Christine, do we know when this grant, once we apply for it, when the awards are?
Um, I don't know the exact timeline.
So would it, would it safe to say that that award would go and coincide with the $2 million repair that's taking place?
I, um, I could indulge you all in some timelines and some budgets, and so you have a, uh, east, the River Crane from Hamilton to Dexter Russell is an existing project. It is Mass Works, CDBG, uh, water sewer, and it ends, and it ends there. And so then, the, the, a few DPW, or the last DPW subcommittee, we brought to you a request for a change order. Can we look at designing from Dexter Russell to Pleasant Street? Should we be able to find the funds for that? And so, we could potentially phase it, where we do a phase one. If, if we need to wait for this award, and we need to find the additional funds for the rest of that road, could we phase it as a phase one and a phase two? And then that way, whatever those additional funds are that we have to come up with anyway, those would be the 20% match towards the, towards the erosion. Uh, but I, I think we mentioned when we came to you for the change order, part of this is, we're just trying to, we're trying to position ourselves, so that we can go after finding it.
All right. Uh, Mr. Polowski.
Sometimes, in one project, you can kill two birds with one stone. I've seen this used municipal governments. We have the stormwater system, this one we have to modify significantly, right, a few million dollars. I know them put off of two years, that, that's coming up. I'm wondering, do they look at both at the same time, like, with that $2 million project coming up? One, like a culvert, it is some crazy stuff I found on Google. That place down by the bottom of Woodstock Road, that levee, looks almost ridiculous, the way it was set up there. But on Google Maps, what we call the Quinabog River down by where they park those buses, it's listed as a Quinabog Reservoir. Is somebody, is some government agency somewhere planning to put a reservoir there?
No.
Right on Google Maps. This isn't some deep in Google.
I certainly, I certainly can't watch for Google Maps.
Well, I can either, but where did they get?
There are trailer trucks going down back roads around here that, you know, so.
But, just to get lost.
I trust, I trust the DPW director, I trust Peg.
Well, I'm not criticizing anyone.
Oh, I know you're not, I'm not saying you are, but I trust them to, to keep an eye on, on those kinds of things and make sure that the town and the, the, the grant opportunities and the town needs emerge successfully and appropriately, and appropriately.
And to, and to assure the public, whenever the DPW is doing a project, they're sizing up their, their culvert, their, their drainage to meet the new MS4 requirements where they can, as part of the project. And maybe not always, but as far as I, I know, that, that is, that is best practice for them.
Well, we got the side rivers, and we, up at the DPW building, there's that DPW, that DEP site. Is that protecting from, like, we don't want our town employees to get, if the water runs up, goes back river down that way.
That's, that's for a different committee. That's for a different committee to discuss.
Most likely to flood.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Peg, another great job.
I was, I was surprised about the mural, I'm sorry to cut me off there. Yeah, I hadn't heard that until right now.
Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Motion, uh, item number eight, adjourned?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Five oh unanimous, this meeting is adjourned.